The only one I have right now is.
I have seven callers. Direct call is meeting order. We'll start with Pledge.
The name is the symbol of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sorry. Alright, you missed the pledge, but we've got you on.
Okay, roll call, please.
Chris Coolick.
Here.
Tina Thompson.
Here.
Jeremy Smell.
Here.
Charles Stoll.
Here.
Kevin Miller.
Here.
Sharon Long.
Here.
Tim Miller.
Here.
Ted Long. John Fontaine.
Here.
SARPD.
Here.
Okay, um, visitors' ready request, any?
I didn't see anything.
Okay. Uh, reorganization, we're gonna nominate four positions. We're gonna open those, um, chairperson.
I'll nominate Tina Thompson for chair.
I nominate Charlie Stoll. Anybody else? Okay, um, motion to close nominations?
I'll make that motion.
Second?
We can close now, yes. Roll call was needed. So, what do we do? Yeah, you do that.
Chris Coolick.
I'm gonna go Tina.
Tina Thompson.
If you're gonna vote for yourself, you probably should abstain.
Just abstain?
Jeremy Smell.
Uh, Tina.
Kevin Miller.
Charlie.
Charles Stoll.
So, Tim, is it your legal opinion that I have to abstain from voting myself? Because I've always been told unless there's a financial obligation, you can't abstain, in fact, you have to file.
Yeah, so, let's go back to Tina's on that, because you're right about that, Charlie. So, let Tina cast her vote, and then Charlie can cast his, because there's really no financial benefit in that certain particular circumstance.
Chris, I'm gonna vote Tina.
Charles Stoll.
And I'll vote Charlie.
Okay. Tina is now the chairman. Is that thirty-two, like, did I count that correctly?
Correct.
Yeah, Tina is now the, uh, chair, and you can.
I can go to my place.
You can say that.
No. There you go. Yeah.
Pick it up from there. Alright, um, moving on to opening for nominations for Vice Chair. I'll make a mention to nominate Jeremy. Smell.
I'll nominate Kevin.
I said no.
Who you got? Do I have to nominate someone?
If you want to.
Like, someone else?
Yeah, do, okay.
You wanna nominate yourself, Richard?
I'll nominate Charlie.
So, we have three nominations, right?
You do. You need a motion to close your nominations if you're done.
Charlie, anything? Jeremy, anything?
Uh, no further nominations for Vice Chair from me.
Um, make a mention to close nominations?
Okay.
Um, then, roll call, votes need?
Yes.
Chris Coolick.
Uh, Jeremy.
Kevin Miller.
Charlie.
Tina Thompson.
Jeremy.
Uh, Ja- Jeremy Smell.
Uh, Jeremy.
Charles Stoll.
Kevin.
So.
You're good, Jeremy is the Vice Chair.
With a vote of three to one to one?
Yep.
Uh, Jeremy is Vice Chair. Moving on to Secretary Treasurer appointment, um, I'll make, well, we need a motion to appoint Sharon Long as Township Secretary Treasurer.
I'll make that motion.
Second. I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Good. Motion carries, um, Treasurer's Bond. We need to make a motion to set the Township Treasurer's Bond, uh, for 2025. This is in accordance with Section 702 of the Second Class Township Code, and authorize the bond to be filed with the Board of Auditors. Um, we need to set that dollar amount, and I think, Charlie, um, asking for clarification from you, that would be set at the maximum value that, that our Secretary Treasurer would have access to at any given time for the township.
Do we have any idea what that amount could be?
The total balance of all accounts?
I think that historically, we've set it around three hundred thousand, Sharon?
Where?
Not, not bonded for way more than that.
Yeah, I was gonna say, are you bonded for the, at least the full value of all accounts, right? So, what's, do you have a number for us? Link in the chat. Should we write?
I wanna say seven hundred thousand?
I didn't say that.
I can, I, I.
So, just historically, we've never done this the proper way. This was always done, the auditors have always set her bond, which I was researching Second Class Township Codes and found technically, we set the bond and we sent it to the auditors. Um, so, we've never really set it, I believe, I think the auditors have historically set it around seven hundred, when they've set it in the past. I mean, I don't see you having access to more than that at any given time.
Their minute book is actually in the drawer there, I'll need to see.
Can we grab something?
I just said, the auditor's minute book is in the drawer behind that, Chris, if anyone wants to see what they set it for last year.
As a township, we're gonna pay, we're gonna pay for this bond, correct?
Yes.
Okay, I mean, I think that, uh, why don't we just set it at a million? Uh, I can't imagine there's that much of a difference, it would safeguard Sharon, which would be good. Um, so, I would just, I'll just make a motion, we set the Treasurer's Bond at one million dollars for 2025.
One second, though.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, Treasurer's Bond set at one million dollars. Next, we need to make a motion to appoint a Township Solicitor. We received a letter from Tim Miller, that's in everyone's packets, uh, requesting reappointment to that role. So, we need a motion to appoint Tim Miller as Township Solicitor, it's the only letter we received, or if there's another motion on the table.
Some motion to keep Tim.
I'll second that motion for Tim.
All in favor?
Let's use pens, show up soon.
Uh, Tim, pending pens.
I can run down the hill and draw pens. But that's the deciding, uh, factor, I'll bring you all the pens you need right now. They don't have my name on them, but I'll get them for you.
Oh, that's right, you have the tower pens. Sorry, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries for Tim Miller to continue as our Township Solicitor for 2025.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tim. Uh, Vacancy Board. We need a motion to appoint someone to the Township Vacancy Board.
No, last year was James Catless. Is that, is he still interested in this position?
I don't have any letters, or I don't see any letters or, or notice in the packet, if there's an interest.
Hasn't he done that for a while?
Are you asking me?
That's anybody that can know the answer.
Yes, for years.
Okay, man, I nominated Jim Catless.
I'll second that, Kevin.
Are you nominating or appointing?
Nominating.
We're appointing, make a motion to appoint.
I'm appointing here.
Okay. Motion to appoint Jim Catless, second by Jeremy, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries to appoint Jim Catless as our Representative to the Vacancy Board. Board of Auditors, motion to appoint someone to the vacancy on the Board of Auditors. Again, I don't have any.
This has been vacant for a year, no one has expressed any interest in that year.
So.
Advertise that.
Uh, yeah, um, we'd have to make a motion to advertise.
We did the full advertising ones already. I mean, we can try again, we've been through that process.
It's a quorum, do they not?
Yes. You gotta say, Tim, what's our legal obligation?
Because we have been down this road for quite some time, so, if you don't have, you can appoint someone in February, March, April, whatever you want to do.
So, we'll make a motion to table?
On your table, of course.
Yeah, okay, so we need a motion to table.
Maybe this gentleman over here, not looking at the floor, so.
A hundred percent of the audience is looking at the floor, does anyone wanna make a motion to table?
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion to table?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, um, the Board of Auditors will meet on January seventh at an undisclosed time at the Gilpin Township Municipal Building for a purpose of setting compensation for working supervisors and conducting other ordinary duties under the Second Class Township Code. Tim, are we supposed to set the time that they meet?
They're meeting at that, I'm sure.
Oh, I would say it's the link on our agendas.
We have not until today.
Oh, so, sorry, I didn't receive that notice, so they're meeting at ten AM?
That's mine, isn't it?
Perfect, 2024 Audit, um, we need to make a motion to appoint someone for our audit, um, in the past, it's been Esther Meyer and Associates to audit the Financial Affairs of Gilpin Township for the fiscal year ending December thirty-first of twenty twenty-four in accordance with Section 917 of the Second Class Township Code. So, I'm looking for a motion.
Motion to appoint Esther Meyer and Associates.
Thank you, Charlie.
Second.
Second that.
Second by Chris and Jeremy, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Good, motion carries. Uh, next up, Engineer, we need a motion to appoint, uh, an engineer for 2025, Township Engineer.
I'll make a motion to appoint Bill Braun, ESSC Engineering, as the Township Engineer for 2025.
Bill Braun retired two months ago.
Okay, who's, is, who is our representative from, uh, ESSC now?
It's a, uh, Oklahoma, it's a.
So, do we just, can we just appoint the firm? Or do we have to appoint a particular person from the firm?
No, you can appoint the firm.
Did we have, did we have a, did they, in the, um, notice of retirement, did they give us a new contact or provide any sort of letter or anything indicating?
I think there was an email forwarded at all, like, a couple months ago, with the new engineers contacted.
I can't figure our name.
We're not using her, we're using her.
No, you're not. No, we have a female.
Uh, was it forwarded to us by Sharon?
I can't recall.
Sharon, do you remember seeing?
It was a gentleman that brought your candy, and he introduced himself to me. I assumed, I assumed his name was in this letter, to be honest with you.
I was gonna say, this letter right here, there's Nathan Guntrum.
That's his name.
What is it?
Nathan Guntrum. That is correct, Chris. I remember it.
Um, Jeremy, there's a, a pack, there are additional pages to the packet that weren't emailed out in advance, so, there's a letter from LSSE, um, with a Nathan Guntrum listed in the letter.
I probably would have nominated Nathan, then, had I had that information.
I'll second.
So, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Road Maintenance Chair, um, need a motion to appoint someone to oversee our Road Maintenance Crew?
I would like to appoint Kevin Miller.
Second, third.
Second, third, fourth, and fifth. Kevin, you've done a great job, hopefully you'll.
Yeah, you have, I wanna make sure that everybody knows how, how hard you've been working there, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Motion to appoint Kevin Miller as our Road Maintenance Chair, seconded by Chris, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Good, motion carries. Um, last year, we had, um, we made a decision to not have a Vice Chair for Road. Um, wanted to just bring that back up for discussion, to see if there's any interest in a Vice Chair for Road Committee.
I mean, I, I'm against that.
Oh, sorry, hold on a second, Jeremy, there's, um, I think Sharon had a question.
I just, we can get to it, when we get to the ZHB, I had a question about, it was something that had come up earlier in the year.
Okay.
Concern about your ZHB Solicitor, so I just wanted to.
Okay.
That's why I was asking, if that, if anybody submitted. That's all.
Okay, um, alright, so anyways, uh, we, we chose not to have a Vice Chair last year. Do we want to continue without a Vice Chair for Road Committee? Or do we want to reinstate a Vice Chair for Road Committee to support Kevin?
So, my, my thoughts on that are with the institution of, uh, there's a potential institution of job descriptions and, uh, employee handbooks. I would like to see, you know, multiple people, uh, being reported to multiple supervisors in charge of different departments, that way, um, you know, it just kinda gives, uh, multiple eyes on a situation. Um, but, uh, so I guess my, my, my opinion would be, I would like to see a co-chair added to the Road.
I'd be opposed to that, I think it leads to too many hands in the pot, it's gonna lead to no one knowing who they report to or how they report.
Sorry, but I would have to agree as well.
So.
Okay, well then, we'll leave Kevin as the sole, uh, person in charge of the Road Crew.
Thanks, Jeremy.
Yes, sir.
Alright, um, we need a motion to appoint, um, two Chair People as, uh, our members for the Negotiation Committee. So, do we wanna, um, do them separate, one and then two, so?
I would, uh, I'd like to nominate Charlie to be the, uh, Negotiations Leader.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, and a second for that? I'm sorry, a second, a second appointment, I'm sorry.
Okay, sorry.
Yeah, a second person, um, for the Negotiations Committee.
Let's get Chris a job, how about, like, I'll nominate Chris to be, uh, the co-chair of the negotiations.
Nomination for Chris?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Good, motion carries. Um, next up, our may, Emergency Management Coordinator. Uh, currently, this is been held by, um, the Chief of Police, Chris Favek, and I think that was done originally when Chris reported directly, um, as a Gilpin Township, um, employee. Opening for discussion, is there consideration, um, to change that, or want to make a motion to continue that? As Chris, there is a, uh, stipend salary of a hundred dollars per month for that role. I know prior to the Chief, um, taking that on, uh, one of our Road Crew, um, staff, Maury Skidikat, was appointed to that role, um, so there is additional consideration, if this is something that, Chris, with all of the additional work that you're doing with SARPD, if it's too much to be managed.
Can we answer that?
Would you accept the nomination?
It would make sense, it's just easier. Like, we have, we have that incident in the preport where we need a dealers, emergency coordinator, it's easier that it's the same person.
I nominate Chris Favek.
I have preports as well, just.
Okay, just so Chris is also, um, preports, Emergency Manager, so, the conversation at the table, Jeremy, if you couldn't hear Chris, is, um.
I didn't quite hear what you said.
Yeah, that he's, he's, um, doing it for the other townships that he's managing, so easy to continue to keep that all within uh, the same person. So, and there is a motion from Kevin to nominate Chris to continue in that position. So, we're looking for a, a second order.
What second?
Uh, Chris Coolick, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Um, next, kind of a two-part, uh, code enforcement and zoning. Originally, um, when we appointed this role, we talked about, um, the job description says reports to the supervisor, we had a conversation at our November meeting about, at the Reorg meeting, redistributing who our code and zoning officer reports to. Um, so first motion is to appoint, um, John as our Code Enforcement and Zoning Officer at a rate of twenty-five dollars per hour.
I'll make the motion to appoint John Fontaine as our Code and Zoning Officer.
Anyone wanna second that?
Second.
Second by Charlie, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, that motion carries, um, and now we need an appointment of someone to manage, um, John, and I would like to make a motion that, um, we appoint Chris Coolick to that position.
I believe in the, in the job description, we adopted the chairman is the direct supervisor.
And we had a conversation at our November meeting that we were going to reassign that at the reorganization meeting. So, do we wanna leave it as the Chair Person and revisit it at a later date?
Uh, Tim, can we, can we make that change now and make the change in the language? Or do we have to make the change in the language and then make the change, uh, in your supervisors?
I'm gonna say, keep it status quo for two reasons, because, A, I think the change should be made first, but this is also not on the agenda, so, you should probably amend your agenda to include this, this particular appointment. Uh, so, unless I'm missing something.
It's number twelve, which should have been all inclusive of.
Okay.
Couldn't, but, that's fine.
I would say, why don't you include that on your February, uh.
Keep it as the Chair and then.
Yeah, and then.
Add it to February.
Make the change in the policy, and then add that to the agenda for the February, I think it's eighteenth, maybe.
Sharon, will you make enough to add that to the agenda, please?
Thank you, Tim.
Yeah, no problem.
Good. Um, Planning Commission for your terms, um.
You missed Pension Administrator.
Oh, I'm sorry, Pension Administrator, number thirteen. Uh, Pension Administrator, motion to appoint someone as our Pension Administrator. I believe in the past, it's been Sharon Long, and I think it needs to be Sharon.
I'll make that motion.
I would make that motion to appoint Sharon as the Pension Administrator.
Second.
Motion by Jeremy, second by Chris, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Um, next up, Planning Commission for your terms, um, I don't, I don't know that I have a lot of information for this in the packet. Um, in the, last year, um, it was Jim Catless, Brian Bing, and Donna Rentler, um, and we have to appoint for a one-year term, a two-year term, and a three-year term on the Planning Commission.
So, Tim, for your reference, in the past, we've just reappointed them yearly. Municipality planning code is pretty specific that they serve a four-year term. Have you been doing that?
Yeah.
It's supposed to be a four-year rotating term.
How, how do we fix this?
What are we doing, Tim?
You can appoint, I mean, the MPC, we did some leeway on that, too, because these things get overlooked, but, do you have, um, do we know if those three wanna remain on the commission, I guess would be my first question.
Charlie, Chair, had you had any conversation with them?
Revisited in February.
Yeah, so that would be the, I think, tabling, and then that would probably apply also to zoning Hearing Board on three-year terms, because it's a similar situation where Jim Catless, Beverly Bish, and Beth McDonald, and Charlie, again, asked your part in the meeting, I don't, you haven't spoken with them to see if they're interested?
No.
This was what I was actually.
Reappointed every year.
Referencing here, so, I don't know if you're gonna appoint a ZHB Solicitor for the ZHB. Um, that's not on the agenda, so you'd have to amend, but, I.
We don't currently.
Well, there was, uh, frustration, I would say, if I remember correctly, with the, um, the, um, variance that was conducted in the summer, remember about that? So, I don't know if that's something you also wanna include for February, I don't think you have any, I haven't seen the zoning report, but I don't think you have any, like, seeking a ZHB right now, but, something you should address, certainly.
Okay, so, first motion to table Planning Commission, number fourteen, Planning Commission, um, until we have a chance to speak to these three people, to see if they're interested in serving out the four-year term that's required.
I'll make that motion, I'm sorry, I missed the name, it was Catless, Bing, and who else?
Uh, Donna Rentler, R-E-N-T-L-E-R, that's who they were last year.
I'll make that motion, it'll table.
And.
Revisit this.
Second, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Um, and then, again, a motion to table zoning Hearing Board, three-year term. Uh, previously, Jim Catless, Beverly Bish, and Beth McDonald, um, table, a motion to table till February, till we have an opportunity to have a discussion with them, to see if they're interested in continuing to serve.
Who's contacting these people?
I'm, I'm happy to contact them, I just.
I guess that's true.
So, what, so the way the agenda reads is?
So, we're technically all reappointed last year, both of us.
This is what I'm asking, were they all, I, I don't recall, I apologize.
Yeah.
Were, what were they appointed, the Planning and Zoning, were they all appointed to just single-year terms?
Uh, last year, or last year?
The, the seven years I've been on this board, we've reappointed the same people we are over here. So, but you said this.
The motion read last year that we just reappoint members of the Planning Commission for another year, and it, the, uh, and then, the motion to reappoint members of the zoning hearing board is how the motion read according to the minutes from January of twenty twenty-four. Uh, that was the wording.
But Charlie is saying that that is not, that's not, that's not legal.
Technically, under the MPC, no.
Okay, so.
It's supposed to be four-year terms and three-year terms.
So, we need.
We need to kinda get some clarity on this, who's on what year terms? Do they wanna do it, and then we just come back in February and, you know, we'll have some information on the last one, this is the middle letter.
Real quick, if I can interrupt, though, you have a Planning Commission meeting.
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow, yeah.
At 10:00 AM.
Yeah.
So if they're planning to meet at 10:00?
What's your order?
Orders tomorrow.
So your planning commission meets, what, February, whatever.
But there's also, there's also a planning commission meeting tomorrow evening at 7:00 PM, isn't there?
I would assume so.
That's the first.
Technically, there's solicitors.
So, I mean, I could tell you this, like, when I went for my, when I went to that group, they were all there, nobody said anything. But again, we can't assume, well, what happens when they meet tomorrow and they're not reappointed?
That's my concern, is that I think we should take action. At the very least, the board should take action to appoint them all to one-year terms. Revisit it in February if there needs to be an extension of the two and the three years. Because you're not meeting again until, I think, the 18th of February. So that's two planning commission meetings that are gonna go.
Yeah.
On my way back.
And Charlie, I know you created the agenda, was there like a planner intent or thought behind this when creating the agenda of what?
My thought was appoint the same three as we have historically done and appoint them each to a set term that now gets the stagger back. That was my thought, but.
Could do that, I mean, if they don't want it, they can resign as well, so.
All right, so.
Okay, so we're on tabling.
Can we just go back and do that, or do we need to, how do we back up officially?
Rescind the table and then bring it back.
But that would have to be whoever made that, correct?
Yeah, who read the motion to table, Sharon? Number 14.
I already sent that table motion.
Okay, so I would make.
I just told me it's wise to have your planning commission in limbo for six weeks.
For two weeks.
Yeah.
I'm flying somewhat blind on this agenda, so.
No, it's all right.
Okay, so for number 14, the planning commission, I'll make a motion to appoint Donna Rantler for a one-year term, Brian Bing for a two-year term, and Jim Catless for a three-year term on the township planning commission.
Can you repeat that, I'm sorry?
Donna for the one-year term, Brian for two years, Jim for three.
Doesn't there need to be a second, with Kevin's rescinding of the motion?
Yes, actually, we should have.
Kevin rescinded, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, Kevin rescinded, Chris second. Then, all in favor? Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, now Jeremy, make your motion again, please.
Okay, I would like to make a motion to appoint Donna Rantler for a one-year term, Brian Bing for a two-year term, and Jim Catless for a three-year term on the township planning commission.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Quick question, Charlie, in the past then, did you just, you as the chairperson contacted them to notify them that we nominated them to these, or they just assume nomination?
Historically, I believe Sharon's just contacted them that they've been reappointed.
Okay, so Sharon, go.
That was while I attend their meeting as zoning officer, but I don't attend their meetings anymore, so.
I'll happily reach out to them.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, now we're on to number 15, zoning hearing board, three-year terms. Similar situation, making a motion to appoint for a one-year term, a two-year term, and a three-year term. Previously, it was Jim Catless, Beverly Bish, and Beth McDonald. So we need a motion to appoint each to a staggered term between those three people.
We're just picking, picking.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion that we do Beverly Bish for one year, Beth McDonald for two years, and Jim Catless for three.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Yeah, motion carries. Jeremy, confirming that when, that you'll be reaching out and you'll notify Jim Catless of vacancy board as well as the planning commission and zoning hearing board, because there are three appointments for Jim.
If you would like me to notify both the planning and the zoning hearing board of the reappointments, I'd be happy to do that. The only thing I ask is that if somebody could send me contact information for these individuals, phone numbers would be preferred, emails, I guess, will be second. I'm happy to reach out to them, especially the planning commission, I would need that information pretty quickly so that I can call them and let them know to show up for their meeting tomorrow evening.
Sharon, do you have that contact information, or is that something we need to locate?
I have it.
Okay.
All right, thank you, Sharon.
Yep.
And then, back to Tim, now that we're circling back, back to Tim, we need to appoint a solicitor.
I, I would.
We should have discussion about appointing a solicitor, but it's not on our current agenda.
So if you want to do that, you should amend your agenda, but.
Doesn't the fact that it has solicitor with an S covered that?
The public agenda doesn't have the actual motions on it, Tim. It's just the numbers.
We'll be looking on here.
Well, and number four has.
She's saying number four, it says solicitor, and then there's an S.
Yes, it does.
I cannot take that, I printed my own, it's not written on the agenda, yeah. Don't say I never gave you anything. That's why I gave you, it's three pages.
I, I would advise you to table that appointment until the February meeting.
All right.
Or you're tugging on your agenda, so.
No, it's not on the agenda, so we'll include.
Included in your, your February agenda.
Okay. Sharon, will you please make a note that we want to include that in the February agenda to discuss the zoning hearing board solicitor. Tim, is that something that we have to advertise, ask for letters for, or do we, are we able to make that appointment?
Internally, you would submit letters, attorneys would submit a letter of interest. For example, I'm Leachburg, I was in 2024, I recently submitted a letter seeking reappointment.
So do we need to advertise, like, how, you know, okay, we don't need that for that, then. Perfect, that would be.
Can Tim do those roles?
I cannot, Jeremy, because.
Okay, that's a conflict.
Yes, because in theory, the township may be opposed to a, for example, a variance. And I would, if that was the case, I would represent the township, the township's interests in the zoning hearing board. So I couldn't be both in that circumstance.
That, that makes perfect sense.
So we need someone for that role, and then we, we are gonna have to seek interest for that.
Yeah.
Got it.
Who was it, who was it previously?
We don't have one, correct?
It was in 24, it was Meckling and Heller, right, no.
Oh, Meckling and Heller in 24, but we, that wasn't on our agenda to appoint them.
Yeah.
Okay. Question mark. Okay. We need to make a motion to appoint someone to represent us at the PSATS convention. I would like to make a motion to appoint Charlie as the Gilpin Township, Charlie Stoll, as the Gilpin Township voting representative at the PSATS convention. Second by Chris. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next, we need to appoint a, two, a representative and an alternate representative for TCC. So first, I'm looking for a motion to appoint a TCC representative, Armstrong TCC representative.
I'll make a motion to appoint Charlie Stoll.
I'll second that motion.
Motion made by Chris and second by Charlie, or I mean, sorry, second by Jeremy, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries to appoint Charlie as our Armstrong TCC representative. Now we need a motion to appoint an alternate TCC representative.
I'll nominate Tina. The votes seated on that.
So there's a, Jeremy, there's a motion to nominate Tina. Do anybody else have a nomination for the alternate?
Yeah, address that motion.
Yeah. Well, I didn't know if you heard that.
Oh, okay.
So, okay. So there is a motion to appoint Tina as TCC alternate, is there a second for that?
I'll second it.
Second by Jeremy, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We need to appoint a primary EMS responder for Gilpin Township for 2025.
I'll make a motion to appoint Laura Kiskie as our primary EMS responder for Gilpin Township for 2025.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Chris, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries to appoint Laura Kiskie as our EMS responder for Gilpin Township for 2025. UCC representative, I know that at our last meeting, our UCC representative and our appeals board, we have volunteers for both of those roles, so just looking to make a motion to appoint Jeremy Smale as our Armstrong UCC group representative.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Was there a motion on that?
No, it said make a motion, because we had already, sorry, because we had already determined that at the last meeting, so just reconfirming the motion. So second motion by me, seconded by Chris, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And then UCC appeals board, Gary Hall was kind enough to offer to hold that role for us, so I would like to make a motion to appoint Gary Hall as our Armstrong UCC group appeals board member for 2025.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. Next up, purchasing procedures. We current, we, last year, I think, increased our purchasing procedures to $2,000 purchase limit on all purchasing policies and procedures. So looking for any discussion needed or a motion for our purchase limit on purchase policies and procedures.
The $2,000, is that, what is that, budgeted, unbudgeted, what are we, what are we approving here?
Sharon, is that for budgeted or non-budgeted purchases?
It's just purchases in general, outside of.
It's specifically budgeted purchases.
Budgeted, but not non-budgeted.
Non-budgeted purchases still have to be approved.
At any level.
Same policy it's been for a long time, 2014.
Thanks, Charlie, appreciate that.
I make a motion to keep it safe.
So Kevin has made a motion to keep the budgeted purchase limit of $2,000.
I'll second that.
Charlie, second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, opposed? Motion carries. Come on, this one, township, number 22. We're almost, we're almost there, Kevin, hang on. All right, township depository, we need a motion to designate a bank as the official depository for Gilpin Township funds for 2025 and authorize the township treasurer to deposit all public funds into that institution.
I'll make that motion.
For what institution?
Oh, for next year bank.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And motion carries to designate next year bank as the official depository for Gilpin Township. Tax collector, this is elected position, so I'm making a motion to reaffirm Sonia Mazak as the Gilpin Township real estate tax collector and Berkhimer Tax Innovations as the township income tax collector for the year of 2025 in accordance with the Pennsylvania Second Class Township Code.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And motion carries, sorry, Chris Charlie, is there something, okay, we're good.
Yeah, you'll get, you'll get there, you're almost there.
I'm almost there?
Yeah.
All right, cool. Official newspaper, we need to make a motion to designate an official newspaper for Gilpin Township for 2025 for the purpose of publication of legal notices, required advertisements, in accordance with Section 110 of the Second Class Township Code.
Make a motion to keep all your times.
Second.
Motion made by Kevin, seconded by Jeremy, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries to designate the leader times. This is not in the agenda, but I think just worth mentioning that, for those following along with last year's agenda, we voted and appointed our police as SARPD. Even though we were under contract, it's been removed because we do have a contract with SARPD. That's why there is an emotion or a listing to appoint our police department for Gilpin. So now we're moving on to the minutes from last meeting. If everyone wants to take a minute to review the meeting minutes from December 26, 2024 meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
A motion to approve the minutes from Chris?
Second.
Motion seconded by Kevin, all in favor?
I'll abstain, I don't have a copy to read.
Jeremy's abstaining, all in favor? All right, okay. Opposed? And a motion carried. If everyone wants to take a minute, I know Jeremy, you'll have to abstain because you don't have a copy of it to review the bills to be paid, and then I'm looking for a motion to pay the bills.
Skip the financial report.
Oh my God, I'm sorry. Too many, too many numbers here. Backing up, if everyone wants to take a moment to review, and then Sharon, if you would like to give the financial report.
In the capital reserve fund, starting balance is $124,978.51, total receipts of $368.43, leaving an ending balance of $125,346.94. In the general fund, starting balance is $220,539.12, total receipts of $77,320.35, total disbursements of $90,756.33, leaving an ending balance of $207,102.94. In the federal fund, starting balance is zero, total receipts of $12,983.77, total disbursements of $12,983.77, leaving an ending balance of zero. In the non-uniform pension fund, the starting balance is zero, total receipts of $2,450.20, total disbursements of $2,450.20, leaving an ending balance of zero. In the road bond fund, the starting and ending balance is the same of $9,003.26. In the state fund, the starting balance is $96,240.63, total receipts of $1,731.2, total disbursements of $23,188.10, leaving an ending balance of $74,783.55, and that is all.
I'll make a motion to settle the financial report.
I'll second.
Kevin, thank you, Charlie, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, and Jeremy abstained, because.
Yes, I am standing again.
Now, bills to be paid. Once you've had a chance for review, someone would like to make a motion to pay the bills.
I'll make a motion to pay the bills, second.
All in favor? Aye. Jeremy abstained, opposed. Motion carries to pay the bills. Executive session, there was an executive session held following the December 26, 2024 meeting. Is there a need for executive session?
Yes, for a potential litigation, honor.
There is a need for executive session, so going to executive session at 8:15.
I'll make a motion to go to executive session before litigation. So, is there a second?
8:15.
Second. I'll second it, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
As long as ten is there.
Chris, I was like, okay.
I don't know how long that lasts, though, my certification.
Two years.
And I definitely can't fix it.
What? Can I go in my office and check the door?
No, I think they're going upstairs.
Oh, we are?
Yeah, we'll, we'll find out during 30 seconds. Jeremy? There, there he is.
Thanks.
I might need a drink. Are we going to the door?
Yeah, they're going.
What's going on?
I didn't have a senior or whatever.
Moon chicken pop, kettle corn.
Oh, yeah.
I think it's pretty long, I'm good myself.
We've been on.
Last time I had any food, it was like 1 o'clock, so I thought.
Do you, uh, have you ever tried other flavors?
No.
I like the.
Okay. Don't they have like a? A white cheddar one too, right? Did you ever have that one? I usually, like Snyder's has a really good white cheddar one, like the, the hallish, because I always end up getting.
Yeah.
The stuff, but um, sometimes like kettle corn is worth it, like when you go to a carnival or fair and you can buy the bags of kettle corn.
Yeah.
Forget about it.
It's like a funnel cake.
It is. You have to go, you have to get one.
One of the secretaries in the township, she retired now. Her daughter and son-in-law had a kettle corn thing, they went to the different festivals.
I remember at, um, there was a guy, he used to set up every year at the, uh, whole festival, at the annual, like, Arthur County whole festival. And it's like, never, he would be in a line to get his stuff, but like, that, I would have loved to know how much that popped in his way. It was like a big cast iron pop, and he'd be there, you know, starting, and you could smell it before you could even see it, you know? But I, I haven't seen him in a while, so I don't know if he's just, you know. Oh, you go to the Rivian?
Uh, it's been a couple of years.
Okay.
We tried to take a grand on it there, and she wasn't having. It was all about it, people were snack and go drink, and we got the bleachers and. She just has, she couldn't do it.
Yeah. The price is there, I mean, I'm always good for a funnel cake at the radio, but like $10.
Yeah, it was like, a big bag was like 10 bucks, yeah.
You know, but now it's like, the funnel cake was 10, and it's like, place sessions, I was like.
My grandma used to make, uh, watermelon skillet.
Yeah, remember that?
Nothing compared. Remember that kettle corn?
Nothing compared, nothing compared to how that was.
Remember those little pans you used to buy that had foil on them, put them on the stove?
Jiffy pop, I've never had jiffy pop, but I know that's what it was.
Yeah, I can't remember the name of it. How did, which, I don't even honestly remember. Say, how do you keep?
It was the best.
Yeah.
It wasn't jiffy pop.
Yeah, she put oil on there, put curls in.
Yeah. When I was little. Yeah.
And I'm sure, you know, we applied for a grant. Three years ago.
Four.
Four years ago.
You all, I remember, there was something, you don't have refurbished like a fence work and all that.
But it was a, uh, magic.
Yeah.
We sent, uh, seventy-three letters to businesses.
Yeah.
Whatever, you know, one response. And it was from somebody looking to.
Not to, not to, not to work.
Yes.
Wow, and the things are, right now, you know, you go to businesses and stuff, the little small businesses are stretching. You know, it's like, you know, you go to these different places, there's just a lot of shoestring themselves. And then we try to go after people that cheat, you know, you can't get a penny out of them. You know, all our business goes there. Our Walmart, they do a $50 food works grant once a year. Yeah, it's not that much.
They make that a fine business. Chris, you have to watch your hand. Press yourself out.
It was like, there was no message.
The market.
Yeah.
Everybody calling her to open a family down there. Yeah, everybody, what we do is like this, Chris. Our life is called, everything I'm in, it's like.
Did you grab the teeth off the table?
I didn't have the school.
Yeah.
You have a contract with them, or there's, there's something classified, you're going to do the past two years, and I think. We had offices.
Well, today? 6:00 AM.
The ASA.
Yeah, I didn't have a sense of going on earlier, because it really wasn't. Yeah. I thought we got money for that album there at least. Did you get it last time?
I was. You doing anything on Sunday, or not at all?
Not Sunday, that was, uh.
That was.
Figured I'd just wait for a call out, and if I got one, I'd take care of it. We were out Saturday. Come on Saturday.
Yes.
All morning.
I think I went towards the, uh.
Just figure, well, see what happens.
We used that money for a minute for the new.
Come on Saturday morning, I just call up, Saturday, I put money in. Okay, I never come down.
You have places that drift a lot? That's three years ago.
Yeah. Depends on the way the wind blows, generally, um. About four, five places. Yeah. There was one that used to get really bad, really, like, about three or nine years ago. When you come up, you know, field, and then roads. Bank, bank, yes, you dug it all down. Somehow it all blows across, and a lot of times I have to sit there. You know, if it's really, really strong winds, then it'll. But it just matters. You don't even know. Yeah, there's a lot of people to the school. Somebody knows, the business manager will know, and every school member sees pretty much every, every seat. Bigger one, you know, there's a certain, you know, special. I don't know if the minimum, like 500 bucks, maybe 80, you know. So if they go under the radar, they could possibly get away with it, but there's always, you have to ask the question. One day I'll go to school, but nobody offers that up. This is, manager will not offer unless you ask. So, let me say goodbye, Sharon, I'm gonna head on out. I'm still recovering, I, we drove down to Florida for the holidays, so.
Oh, boy.
And then, uh, you know, Friday, I went down to DC to see, um, the carmen this morning. So hopefully we can get the money from him.
Time I spent behind a wheel of a truck on Friday, I think I would have been at the Florida Georgia Line. 14 hours I drove.
We drove the way down to Fort St. Lucie, Florida with the baby, so.
Yeah.
Hey, I'm gonna.
I think my parents say, believe that, that's about what it takes them to hit Florida, about 14 hours. They drive straight through? Stop to use the restroom and fill up the gas tank anyhow.
They just call me and chat with you.
They get on 79, they'll hit 95 to like Charleston, yeah, and then they take, and they got $95. And then 40.
You too?
I'm trying, I didn't get yelled at at this meeting, so it's a plus.
Yes, I guess that, I guess that's why.
If I get out the door, you know.
Be safe today.
It's like now, it's like going to Walmart's dangers anymore. I try to go like to a different one, and there's people everywhere now, you know?
Oh, yeah.
Walmart's always dangerous.
Anywhere, people accostate, it's like, you're eating dinner at a restaurant, and then people come up and want to talk to you or complain. So, I guess you signed up for it, you know? Anyhow, y'all take care.
You too.
Be safe.
Thank you.
And, uh, give it, our next replenishment somewhere in the spring.
Okay.
If you guys have a request, at least let it replenish and.
Okay, sounds good.
All right?
Thank you.
Yep.
You're half saying that, but how many people?
Yeah, it's nice. There was a lot.
Yeah. No, never, never. Never happened. Yeah.
Armstrong 917. You see myself in the, in the round. Did you say the vehicle was in the driveway?
Done.
Will you get your time, sir?
I don't know yet.
Copy, just call it.
I don't work with you in that. Yeah, no, I haven't heard. But anything you haven't heard, anything.
Also, that was definitely not working, because the public places started hearing, it's just, yeah, it's not very.
Oh. They don't think forgiveness is a special.
I'm not a good reporter for you. I got Sharon.
Yes. I'll, I'll leave.
Any projects going on?
You know? Trying to add a point this morning, and I handed a Medicare card to somebody for the first time. I don't, I don't know if that, I don't have any more projects. I'm gonna, I'm gonna do small stuff. Yeah, I'm gonna do small, like two, three, four day jobs, or maybe a week or two for a kitchen. As far as going to do, unless it's for family, I'm not. And those don't pay well, so it's not like.
Yeah, that's right, because everybody wants a discount.
Uh, like, my niece, my brother and daughter wants, she wants a book, so I'll make sure to get it to the house and show it back. But that's, probably.
And how much of that work you do yourself?
Up until now, I've done, all the firm work, you know, all the chemistry, you know, that, all the finish work. We said everything up from the beginning, you know, beginning to, that's the front. Drywall, and stuff like that. Stuff like that, not worth it, not worth it, because it's changing, and everything else you have to deal with.
Yeah, I agree.
They're about to change again. July this year. They're going to 2021, you should see cause. It's gonna change, all kinds of. Exterior wall, you have a bottom, a big one, with a, you call it a rubbery wall. Or you have two-by-six, top plate, two-by-six, bottom plate, two-by-four wall. R13 dense insulation wall. And two, it's just a foam. And like, on the inset, you sit on the outside, so you put lower siding in the house, you use grease, and it creates, you know, something like that.
I've seen the ones where they take the top and bottom plates as two-by-eights, and then the stagger, the two-by-fours, one in, one out.
Yeah.
And then that way, the insulation kind of weaves between them, and you don't get that direct, you know, thermal break.
Correct.
Right, it won't bridge across.
So it's, it's building anywhere. But I just got another picture, I don't know if you got it here, a drywall with a 20% epoxy. You know, OSB, they're projecting 50 bucks a sheet a year within 30 days.
I was just at Lowe's yesterday, it was $23 a sheet for 716 toes.
Go right back to where it was.
Yeah, and it just.
Everybody started rebuilding, I heard this time. Okay, they were all in the demo and the cleanup, and now they're buying product. So there's their, there's their reason, OSB.
Yeah, just.
Constant construction.
I built my addition three years ago, I had it springed. I just did two-by-six, you know, construction, I had, um, we did a cathedral on the night.
That's solid.
Yeah, that's solid, just like a cocoon when you walk in.
Yeah, we do a lot of, it's called flashing that, it's two-by-six walls, and flashes, a lot of all the two-by-sixes.
Yeah.
So, kind of starts to see a purpose, I just, full, full of tenths here, it comes, old school.
Right.
House still needs to breathe, and you gotta start putting home, you want to bring outside air, and that's a problem.
Yeah. Yeah, I agree.
It'll be interesting, my nephew wanted to go on a piece of property I had, and I talked to him, I'm gonna talk to him, go buy a house. You'd get much better, go buy a house. Re-sell it from that guy.
The one thing I did in my addition I really liked, because we built on the slabs, I did the heated floors. It's nice.
That's what he did. Build up there, what we built, shut it away.
Country.
That's why I built that house.
So there's no basement in it? There's no basement in that?
No basement, we, we, we bought it in Philly, we never went, we camped it off, we built it, and we actually poured the floor, we even it. We stamped the floor. And then stained it a light wood green color. Where's that?
Yeah, you don't need, you don't put LVP or nothing on it.
No, you don't put anything on top, area regular, watch your area.
Yeah. What I would, if I would build, I would do that in a house, and I would also include it into the garage, and I would do the apron outside of the garage as a run. So that way you could, you could melt that off as well.
Yeah, we heated the garage, we didn't, we didn't do, in Denver, we're already not really driving. We spend as much, you spend on everything else, we just want a couple of extra days. Start getting cheap. You gotta stop somewhere.
Right, now, do they do a boiler or hot water tank for the?
Boiler. Boiler, and the boiler supplies hot water as well.
Yeah. Does she have gas there?
Has gas there, it actually heats the pool as well.
Oh, it's even better, yeah, you had to put out the boiler anyway, to handle it all.
It's a good setup.
Yeah. In fact, I'm considering my family room that has the heated floor, they had to put a special pad in under the carpet to allow heat to come out. And we're considering ripping that out and putting in just some kind of LVP or something.
Just be careful, just have a rubber mat.
No, I would get the approval for heat.
You have the cord back, it works good.
Yeah, so the heat can come through, because I have, for that room to stay at about 68 to 70, I have to have my, uh, no, see, I have 50 gallon hot water tank. And I have a probe that's in the floor, and I have to have a probe that's about 90 to make the room 68 to 70. And I'm thinking if I took the carpet out, I could.
Yeah, correct, what is this, when we said, for this guy, 66, now Charles keep it down to 77.
Wow. Well, you don't have any restriction either, so you're getting the full force. Well, you don't have any restriction either, so you're getting the full force.
The nice part is, is that it's actually not, I mean, and the weather won't work. That, that's where it goes to the outdoor first.
Right.
You know, at least comfortable. Just the stupid expense, that's a lot.
Yeah, but I think it's worth it from the initial setup, and like you said, if you stamp your floor and you get up no, no flooring to deal with, and it's great for pets, and it's great for wear and tear, and it's easy to keep clean.
Yeah, actually, she asked me what the hotel forward, talking to people, she said it's called South Carolina. That's it. You want me to move in, it's gotta be South Carolina. That's one of your problems, I sent me this morning.
Really?
That supervisor guy driving us.
Oh.
I'm not sure it wasn't intentional.
I had somebody Friday night when I was heading home, pull out of the Legion, come up the road, right up the middle of the road, I pulled over as far as I could and then just laid on the horn. They were, they were looking at the road. They never slowed down. I agree with you, I think it's cheaper to remodel an existing house. Than to try to build something from scratch.
It doesn't appear to be that. I went, one of his daughter, wanted to do, she had a baby, she's grown out by eight houses. But she, she actually went up, and I went up, I never really looked at it, modulars, black colored shells, I found that too now. I'm shocked. I'm shocked, that thing was built fairly well. It was like twenty-three percent cheaper than trying to stick it out.
The one guy I used to work with, he bought one, he called it an industrialized house, because it's not a modular, like, it wasn't built on a frame with wheels. He, they, they brought it in on a trailer and crane grave place, and this, he has a two-story house and they brought it in four sections. And they got the tour and the plant, they went to pick all their colors, and, and then they brought it out in pieces, and, and he was really impressed because it was built in a factory, you know, under controlled environment. Everything's built on jigs and, and, you know, all the cuts are straight, and, uh, everything's squared, level and plumb, and he was really impressed with it, and they just brought it, set it on site, and he did that, uh, superior walls for his basement.
That's the thing we're doing up there.
Yeah, he did superior walls and, um.
There's a lot to be said for it, and that, and that honestly, that, that is the true benefit of modular, okay, the one with the wheels and the axle, that's called a motor.
Yeah.
And you don't get a deed to that, that house, you just, you get a title.
Right.
Okay, the other one you do, but the only guy part about to open it in four pieces, if you're traveling from where to where, you bounce it down the road, but this.
Right.
You know, one, you're fifty-five, sixty-five dollar, you can't see what they are.
But he did have to have some drywall cracks fixed, and, um, yeah, because it twisted and then things got racked and.
There's a lot, there's a lot of good for it, I'm shocked, the only thing I think, like, the finishes were a little bit less than all of the, I just, you know, that's all I think, what you wanna pay for.
Yeah, they're different packages.
Yeah, so you see, you get that. You brought eight more?
Yeah.
I hear ya, it is my best side, but.
Need fifteen. Side crash. Oh, you're going personally, yeah.
I spit you in there. That's one thing I could do, that's one thing I would turn it out real well, I'd have to fuck around, play a class.
I'll play that shelf.
That's you, something.
Yeah, and like, close to the wrestling. So I have, I think they were, it's like.
I'd be waiting like you to get something, I'd just walk myself back with my hands up. I love being able to touch it and watching my garage.
Okay, I'm going for it, sorry. Okay, thanks. See you guys, see you, Sharon.
Hey, Kirk.
I talked to Ginny today. Ginny Frank, she called me.
Look, if you're a bit, let's get.
Well, she handled that last house I sold, um, but she called because the people who bought it said that, because we installed, we put a new stove in, uh, you know, our range. And they said it was tripping a breaker, and I said, it's a gas, how can it trip a breaker? She goes, well, I don't know, that, they called and they wanted to know if they could call you and ask you about where I go out of the window. And said it's tripping, it's tripping a breaker, and I said, it's gas, how can it trip a breaker?
Yeah, I don't like.
Yeah, so, I had her. She weren't enough, it was okay, they got my phone number. Here's a little slick spot by the tire pile.
What's that?
Here's a little slick spot by the tire pile. By your house.
Tire pile?
Yeah.
Where's that? What do you mean?
Across the aisle, so.
Oh, across the aisle.
A little slick spot, I spotted a little bit.
Okay. We'll be back out first thing in the morning.
That's it.
My shift don't do shit, so.
I got a text from my homeowner, it's a seastore award, but, uh, it's like two months, I think, uh, it was ten thirty-seven, I had it.
Wow.
And he sends me this stuff. And I just have to look at it, look at it, look at it, and I'm just, here, you should respond, you should respond. He called back, yeah. We'll wait and see what happens, that's ridiculous. You guys have to answer everybody, I don't want to fuck you guys.
Yeah. I was having trouble with my phone down at the office again, or down in Raleigh, where my office is down there. Wasn't caught, wasn't getting messages. I gotta unplug it, let it, and plug it back in, kind of like, what do you gotta do with your phone? I was like, man, it was pretty, pretty quiet, and I was like, oh, wait a minute, I'll bet you that thing, because that's happened one time before. Then they started rolling in, beep, 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 uh.
Nine sixteen, I can I have any updates to my location? Can I hear any patient info? Fourteen-year-old female, injuries from a domestic violence incident, has started pain, her chest, acid, bleeding in her mouth, swollen face. My son wanted to continue to set satellite location.
You just took my chair and pushed your.
Oh, alright.
Alright, Jeremy, we got you back upstairs. Right, so returning. Yeah, and then just, yeah, returning from executive session at eight twenty PM. Or eight twenty-three if you're looking at that clock. Alright, continuing on with reports, uh, John, zoning and code report?
Yes, um, currently I have fourteen active enforcement actions going on current, right now. Um, I did file one citation, we have a pending hearing in February on that case, and as far as the zoning side goes, um, I did issue two zoning permits, one for a sign, and one for a pool. And that's all I have.
Motion, Dex, up the zoning and code report?
I'll make motion.
Sir.
Motion made Charlie second by my best friend Kevin. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Road report, ten.
Some road report for Monday, January sixth, twenty twenty-five, uh, keep in mind it's such a short time since our last meeting, so, but I, we did manage to place a two A on Lovelace Road, uh. I would describe that road as gnarly before we were able to do that, but we had a couple of nice days, so we were able to work on that, and we did have to clear some debris and several boundaries from that windstorm that come through, um, a little bit ago. Um, as you can see, we tore up this carpet here in the meeting room for the new flooring, we picked up the new flooring, uh, we removed the linoleum for the bathroom also for the new flooring, um, and, um, we've been doing snow removing, uh, did a little bit of tree trimming. Uh, we did have a truck break down today, uh, which really slowed us down, uh, I just picked it up right before I came to the meeting, so it's back in service, and I just kind of want to remind everybody that, um, you know, we have these lake effect snow bands or these nuisance snows. Um, generally with two clouds out, you're looking at five hours, if we do your road before we can get back to your road, now, when I'm out, and I'm going from road to road, I tend to try to touch up certain roads, they get more traffic, evergreen, sovers, Godfrey, I tried to get over them multiple times, I think, I think Friday, I, I was down Godfrey probably nine different times. And down over the hill, probably four or five to the river, um, and then just, just now, like I said, before I came to the meeting, we tried to go back around because we had that other coating of snow, um, so we out, we just try to keep back around, but keep in mind, if it's snowing an inch an hour, it's gonna be four or five hours before I can even think about coming back down there, so you're gonna have four or five inches of snow on the road before we even get back down there. Just kind of wanted to, to say that because I, I know there was some complaints from Friday, you know, but, you know, uh, just on Facebook or whatever, and just kind of wanted to remind everybody and that, you know, it takes time, because I got probably seventeen or so miles of road I gotta plow, and where he has probably fifteen or sixteen, somewhere around in there, I, I, I don't have the exact map, but those are good numbers, but I feel pretty confident in saying, so that takes some time. So that's, that's not all. Oh, and I wanted to thank Kevin for helping us out some too, as we can, hopefully, he come out and help us out some, and I really appreciate it.
No problem. I'm making much weeks at the road report.
Second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Okay, Ted, thank you, I think you guys are doing a great job and moving as fast as you can, so appreciate what you're all out there doing, and it's not easy. Um, police report. The honorable chief is at the table, go ahead.
So, Charlie, I just realized why you don't have one, because it doesn't exist yet, you're meeting way too early, so you got November's already, December won't be done until probably a week from now, so you can normally have it by meeting time, but you meet way earlier than normal.
Got, oh, right, because it's required that we reorganize early.
Yeah.
Got it, so, no SARBD report?
No, December's not, I think, we didn't have yet.
See, that, Hunter, when you come, you always tell us stuff, the chief shows up, no report. Do we need a motion to not accept a report that Chris didn't give us? Tim, so let's do a report.
I don't, I think I've covered everything on mine, so I have no report for you, this is.
Thank you.
You do not need to make a motion.
Perfect. Um, there is no old business on the agenda, so new business action items. Alright, um, we need to set the meeting date and times for twenty twenty-five, um, the meetings have traditionally been the third Tuesday at seven PM. Um, any, if there's any discussion of that, I know that there was some discussion about, um, when that falls on December twenty-sixth, or within the Thanksgiving and Christmas holiday week, that it makes it difficult for us to get a forum if people are traveling for the holidays, so I, I don't, open for discussion.
That was just the end of the year meeting, and, you know, and I know we had a lot, uh, associated with, you know, the Water Authority and special meetings, but it felt like we were getting together over the holidays a lot more than necessary, so, one thing I personally would like to see is, can we get that year-end meeting budget, or even get the budget approval kind of moved up a little bit, so that we can all break and just enjoy the holidays with our families?
Charlie, you had a.
My, my only concern with that is we're not then approving the most up-to-date accurate numbers, because typically when we have it right there towards the end of the year, Sharon has reconciled everything for December, we have exactly reconciled numbers of what we're going into the new year with, and, I mean, these past couple of years, the budget has not been tight enough, that matters as much, but there have been budgets in the past seven years that I've been here, that if we don't have the most accurate down-to-the-cent number, our budget might not balance come December thirty-first, so that's my concerns.
Even if, even if we could just bump it up to the week before Christmas, I mean, I, maybe we can, can we make adjustments as we get closer to that, I mean, we have the flexibility to, to move that date, if we get to that point, we find that the budget is extremely tight for some reason, then obviously we'll all do what we need to do. So, that was my only, that was my only concern, the Tuesdays are fine, all that, I just, it's, it felt like we were getting taken away from our families a bit during that, uh, that Christmas holiday season, that's all.
Looking at the calendar, and I, I don't know if anyone else has their calendar up, Christmas will be on a Thursday, so then we would be looking to meet Friday and then the weekend, so.
Well, it doesn't necessarily have to be the day after Christmas, so, historically, we've done, I mean, like, the year before, I think we did the thirtieth, which was, would be a Tuesday next year, or we've done.
I was gonna say, could we maybe look at? Yeah. I was gonna say, if we could maybe even look at that.
Yeah.
One of those, instead of that one. Okay, so, back to, um, for our regular meetings, do we have a motion to keep our third Tuesday at seven PM for our regular meetings?
I'll make that motion, keep it, seems to work.
Motion made by Chris second by Kevin, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Okay, so our regular meetings are the third Tuesday at seven, and then year-end meeting, we don't have that technically on the agenda to set, so I think we can.
Would say that can be put under setting dates in time due twenty-five.
Yeah, so we can, well, I was gonna say, we can either set it or we can, everyone can look at calendars and discuss, but if you're ready to set it now, um, do we have a motion to set the year-end meeting for anything but the twenty-sixth of December?
Sharon, could you remind me what levels, is that there's any of that, didn't we land up?
December twenty-sixth, but for fifteen.
They went the day after Christmas.
So they went the day after.
Is that what it was here?
You said we can't do it one week, girl?
I, I deter to share, defer to Sharon as the treasurer, when she can reasonably reconcile the books for.
Um.
I mean, if we did like the nineteenth, which would be the Friday before Christmas.
Like even when. Main payroll will be done.
Uh, well, that's true, we have payroll.
But we would know what that that number would be.
Approximately, if anyone.
I mean, I, I do agree with that, it would be nice to know.
I would like to avoid the twenty-sixth, especially with Christmas being on Thursday.
I would like any, anytime the week of the fifteenth. If, if the nineteen, if we have to wait till the nineteenth, I, I mean, I guess that's fine, but don't we regularly meet the sixteenth? So is there a chance we could just do it all? And I think we just put the caveat in that if the budget is extremely tight and we find ourselves in a situation that we will all agree to like do what's best for the town and then come in over Christmas.
I think that would be fantastic.
You'd have to re-advertise your.
Year-end meeting. How far out do we have to advertise?
I just, I can't imagine that fourteen days is gonna make the difference in our budget. I think we'll understand whether we're in peril or not by then.
How far out would we need to?
Usually seven days is what you're.
Okay, so.
We're calling it as a special meeting.
Yeah.
But we would know in November, but we would know in November, by November, we'll know if it's tight that we would need to add that change date for year-end meeting.
You just have to advertise, if that's all I'm getting at. But yeah, even with a special meeting, you have pretty, pretty leeway to do it in a quick turnaround.
So is there a motion to extend the December meeting to include our year-end meeting? And then what, and what time are we starting? Are we starting at six? To do our regular meeting and our year-end meeting in that same?
Say theoretically, it'll just be one meeting.
We don't need the additional time?
I think we could combine it as the, you know, the year-end meeting, because we conducted regular business at our year-end meeting anyways already. You know what I mean, the last meeting we had, the year-end meeting, we conducted regular business, we had reports, that's why Ted's report was short now. We had police reports, et cetera, so we conducted regular business. So I would say if we advertise it as just our year-end meeting, if that's okay, I think that's what we should do.
So are you making that motion Jeremy?
I mean, Sharon can put it in, Sharon can put that into the minutes, God bless her, but yeah.
She got it, gold star, she's got it. Okay, motion made by Jeremy, second by Chris. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Um, next up, discussion on transferring and closing the K-9 fund. And moving the balance to SARPD.
I'd like to make a motion to transfer the K-9 fund balance to SARPD and close the account and authorize proper township officials to take and no action necessary to effectually the same.
Sure.
That was beautiful, Charlie. Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries to close the K-9 fund and transfer balance to SARPD. Old business, old business for discussion and potential auction items, water authority discussion and update. Charlie, would you share?
Jeremy's kinda taking one on this, so I mean, the only update we really have is that they're having.
Yeah, go ahead Charlie.
The only update we really have is that they're gonna be holding their January meeting. I don't have.
I do, it's, you and I both said we get a ten to eighteen.
Yeah, yeah, we said we get ten, I lost it.
Hold on, it's, that's. I think it's.
I have the fourteenth. I have Tuesday the fourteenth, because they're regular monthly meeting.
That's the date I believe I was told as well.
So they plan to meet Tuesday, January fourteenth for their regular monthly meeting. At that time, they're going to decide how to move forward. That's about all the update we have, other than that all the supervisors attended their meeting and made our position clear on this regarding contracting.
Okay, thank you Charlie. Um, next up, Phil McConville municipal authority appointment. Phil has submitted a letter for consideration.
Phil has rescinded his letter prior to this meeting.
Oh, he rescinded it? Oh, alright.
He asked me a voicemail while I was in the meeting before this and has rescinded his letter because we tabled it false.
So let's, let's.
Well, I don't think we need any action at this point, right? He's rescinded his letter to be reappointed to his term, so that position's open as well as the other position. So we don't need to take any action, okay. Um, Sonia Mazak tax collector letter. Charlie, I think you were gonna do some research on this to report back.
Yeah, in doing the research, everyone's in the same boat as us, no one has made a decision yet on what they want to do. Other than Bethel Township, Bethel Township did approve an increase from, Sharon, I'm sure, was theirs three to five percent? Or was it five to seven?
Five to seven.
From five percent to seven percent.
Which is what she's requesting in this letter.
Yes, so if I had to guess, most others will follow suit since this similar or same letter went out to all, almost all municipalities in the county. I'd like to make a motion to give that increase. And of course, just making note, not necessarily part of the motion, that it does not take effect until the next tax collector term starts, which would be beginning of twenty twenty-six.
I, I would second that motion, I think it's fair.
Okay, motion made by Charlie, second by Jeremy, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
And with that too, I'd just like to note that Sonia does a spectacular job as our tax collector. Of the other municipalities I've looked at, we have one of the highest collection rates I've seen. We're collecting well over ninety percent of our taxes, which is high for a lot of municipalities, most are under ninety. So I think this is a well-deserved increase to Sonia, so she'd be reelected.
Thanks Charlie. Alright, any other old business? Moving on, new business discussion, potential action items. First up, township supervisor permit fees, Kevin, I know you wanted this added.
We'll table it.
Okay. Move to, do we need to make a motion to table this, or because it was Kevin's?
I'm gonna make a motion to table it.
Perfect. Anyone wanna second that?
I'll second Kevin's motion to table it.
Thank you. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Okay. Kevin, it's you again, ATV permit procedures and reciprocity.
This is kind of cheap too. Chief has some talking about the procedure.
Okay, have at it. Well, I know Kevin was doing some research last meeting, so.
My only question is, is it moving forward now that you have John, is John gonna do these or are you still gonna do them? And I know that your cost is as high as it is because you're paying the officer to do them.
John, do you want to tell me what you said? I'm sorry, I had a hard time.
I don't know any of it.
He asked if John was gonna be doing our permits because our costs are high because we're paying the police to do it.
Yeah, I'm not. Sure, we didn't have permits like this over there.
Okay, thank you.
I don't know any of that.
So John, it would mostly be should the board decide, well, people turn in their permits, you check their source information, check their license, I'm assuming, I don't know, do you guys run the license?
We do.
Which I believe you can do with your, with the, thinking we got you, the.
ORI, yes.
ORI number, thank you, I should not think of it. Um.
It's gotta be that.
It should be.
Yeah, so it would be a simple, I mean, you could speak to the procedure better than me, but as far as.
Yeah, all we do is verify license and insurance, um, that's it.
And then we get on stickers.
It's something I can do on here, do an amendment or something like.
Yeah.
And with that, I'd like to note that would retain them the full fee to the township right now.
We can.
Right.
SARPD takes.
All the five dollars.
All the five dollars of each permit because they do most of the work into it.
So we've got, but I think we have kind of, this is multiple pieces here, so.
This is two.
Piece one.
Kevin, you talked to Parks in Bethel?
Mm-hmm.
Yes, where are they at on as far as the reciprocity of sharing permits?
They were just, they were willy-nilly, so yeah, let's do it, but.
So they would know what to.
They take a yearly charge, correct?
But.
Uh, Parks Township, I'm not.
Does Parks have a mountain charge?
Yeah, they're like ten or twenty-five dollars.
I think they're twenty-five, do you know what Bethel's is Sharon?
Fifteen?
Fifteen at Bethel.
Bethel's fifteen and Parks is?
So with, with that, with that in mind, do we, do we need to be at a consensus? So we're talking about having the permit that basically would approve us riders to go from Gilpin and also use that at Parks and in Bethel, is that correct?
That's my understanding of what we've been talking about for a couple months.
That's what it does, yes.
Yeah, I mean, and, and the big concern I think that's been risen time and time again is that we charge seventy-five, the other, for residents that is, the other two charge fifteen to twenty-five.
Fifteen to twenty-nine.
Twenty-five.
So we're, we've got a big, big gap there.
That's where I was going, and what, how, how do we propose to, if we wanna do that, number one. Number two, how do we, you know, readjust our fees so that we aren't aligned with them? Because they're not aligned either, but we're obviously way off.
Well, we were like the first ones to ever do it.
Yeah, we were personally.
Yeah, I think we definitely kind of set the precedence.
Your stickers cost about five hundred dollars a year.
And that's for how many?
A hundred.
Hundred stickers cost five hundred a year, so. Five boxes stickers.
Wasn't there a discussion of who we share stickers with? How many, how many permits did we do last year?
A hundred, it's too confused.
We did about a hundred?
But the point that keeps coming up is, I could go be a guest in Parks Township and pay fifteen dollars and still come over here if you're gonna recognize, not me personally, but other people could do that.
Yeah, that's a good point, yeah.
Yeah.
So that's kind of where it was at.
And that also runs into our issue of we charge a non-resident fee too, so. And the non-residents' fee is a lot more than the resident, I think it's a hundred, if I recall correctly. So I mean, there's issues with the whole non-resident thing too.
I mean, I'd be okay if we decided to lower our cost and just have a flat fee that aligned closely with Bethel or Parks, you know, assuming that we're not losing money on it with John's time and also the, you know, the stickers. It sounds like a sticker five bucks, is that right?
That, yeah, he said fif, he said five hundred.
Five hun, five hundred for a hundred.
Five hundred.
Yeah, so five dollars.
It seems to be.
And it takes John a half an hour, once you just use that as a, as a, as a rough time that.
Twelve dollars.
So then add that, so we're at seventeen, well, if we are costing, so it means twenty bucks, sounds fair.
Seventeen fifty.
I mean, it's kind of in the mid- between Parks and Bethel, and if it covers our cost, I think it's good.
I would like to say if we're gonna do that, we need to introduce a new resolution fee schedule at the next meeting, changing that rate via the fee schedule. Because that is a, that's a, that's a rate on our fee schedule.
That's a financial, yep. Okay, so I feel like we have one more piece of, like this is three parts.
Sure.
Part one is, we're gonna need a motion to approve that SARPD no longer handles and it's moving to John Fontaine to handle, so we're gonna need to make that motion to change how we permit.
You're good with that, you're okay with that?
Yeah, I mean, if I have Chris's cooperation in it, yeah, but you said I'm not familiar with how that system works, so.
And most of them get dropped off right here, right?
Yeah, so we have five or six out there, we just didn't really know the next one, I wanted to know what's gonna happen tonight.
As long as you're okay with it.
Yeah, I'll just roll it right into my code enforcement.
And I'll make a motion that we.
Real quick, just before we make any motions, Tim, the ordinance explicitly states that Gilpin Township Police Department handles it. Now, obviously, all the duties like this SARPD, do we have issues with our ordinance here since it explicitly? I mean, I, I don't expect anyone to challenge it, but this was not a popular ordinance when we first enacted it. So there's always potential for someone to come back and say, you're not following me.
So what's our order of business?
Have to do an ordinance amendment on it, but again, it's more procedural issue there. You really want me to handle that, I'm happy to do it, but.
Do we need you, um, do we need you that to happen? If it says stays in Gilpin Township, we've been doing it our own for.
Well, technically, Gil, so technically SARPD absorbed all duties and responsibilities in the Gilpin Township.
No, 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 I mean.
Yeah.
And you passed an ordinance indicating that too, so when you created the regional part. So anything that would be in that vein would have been incorporated into the new, into the ordinance that transferred the authority over, so.
What if we just, what if I just use the authority that we have to make him act even on behalf of?
I mean, and I would think, we're treading gray area here, but I mean, if the board votes to give these powers to John, by clarification is still on the table, and at that time, we can make changes to all of our ordinances across the board where we feel fit.
And SARPD is signing off on it, so it's not like there, it's a hostile takeover that you're concerned about.
In theory, we could.
Take it over.
Give Kevin the authority back on our behalf to do this.
I think at the time, that language is there because that was the only option.
Yeah, we didn't have code enforcement officers that were from our police department.
Okay, so I'll make the motion to turn it over to Mr. Fontaine to start handling the ATV permit.
I'll second that.
Motion?
All in favor? Aye. Opposed?
No, I'm sorry Jeremy, we have to do the, the fee? Is that what your next motion would be?
Next one is to figure out the fee, but it sounds like because that's a rate schedule change, we have to actually make an agenda.
So we'll have to write a, a fee resolution for next month, and then the fee res, fee.
Well, can we do like, just do twenty-five dollars? I thought you said, would you say twenty?
He said tw, he, one was fifteen, one was twenty-five, he said, do we pick twenty in the middle?
Okay.
He didn't really tick a number, he was just saying, where do we go with it?
We were just spitballing numbers, and we said basically five dollars, you know, for the sticker and then, you know, approximately twelve dollars fifty cents or whatever of John, of John's time, assuming a half an hour to process. So it put us at seventeen something, so I just threw out number twenty, it doesn't have to be that, I just thought something that was competitive with the, with the other two examples because you have, you made a really good point when you said, hey, why wouldn't I just go to Parks, get a fifteen dollar permit and, and ride everywhere anyways?
Yeah, right, right.
That's a wonderful.
Right.
So.
And those stickers that we have left out, don't we typically have stickers left and we just change the number?
I have some left from last year that we could get advantages, you could get advantages to make twenty twenty-six.
Okay, so we have to table changing the fee until we do a rate schedule change for the next meeting, but do we have, can we at least agree on a fee so that when we make that schedule change, we have the right numbers?
I like twenty. Sounds pretty good. Twenty is what I initially came in with when we did this ordinance in twenty twenty-two, I wanted it to be twenty-dollar permit, so, fine with me.
I think that's, I think that's a great idea, yeah.
Okay, so we can vote that we would like to make a twenty-dollar fee, but then we have to.
I mean, I would say we don't even have to.
We can agree that we want a twenty-dollar fee so that we can do the rate schedule.
Put on a rate schedule, the fee schedule.
Okay.
Someone will prepare, need to prepare a resolution for the fee schedule.
Okay, so we will prepare a resolution to the, change the fee schedule to twenty dollars for permits, and then last but certainly not least, reciprocity.
Is there a motion for this twenty-dollar thing?
We don't have to make a motion discussion.
That would be a resolution next month.
We have to do a resolution, add it to the agenda that's supposed to vote on it. So number three is reciprocity. With the other two townships.
Tim, do you think there's an ordinance change that would have to happen?
I would have to believe that, that one.
That, because that's getting into a little bit more law.
I think you're, I need to look into that, let's just say that, why don't we table that for February and I'll look into it.
I'll make a motion to table reciprocity of ATV permits and authorize Tim to investigate, research necessary changes.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries, thank you Tim. Um, I would like to make a motion to amend the agenda to add new business item to vote on the conditional use hearing that we had at six PM for Jeremy's mail for logging of his property. It's not on the agenda, but we have a tight forty-five day requirement that we have to vote and submit our decision in writing, and our next meeting would be at forty-three days, which is too tight of a turnaround. So I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda to add that. Second by Chris, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Great, and then I just want to note that we, that the cost of the conditional use hearing is six hundred dollars. We have yet to invoice Jeremy's mail for that. So as a part of the vote and discussion, an invoice will be sent and Jeremy's mail will pay the six hundred dollar conditional use fee. It hasn't been paid yet because we have not invoiced him or notified him of the amount that was due. So from there, I'm looking for a motion or a vote to either approve or deny Jeremy's request for conditional use. Tim, is there anything that you need to add or provide?
I would just add that the reason, because it's very. I would just add that the reason because it's very strict uh limits as to or requirements for why the agenda can be amended, and one of them is time limits and the time constraint. I I feel that our next meeting is forty-three days, not only does this board have to make some sort of decision in that timeframe, uh there needs to be a factual finding that's also written factual finding that's issued to the applicant in that timeframe. Quite honestly, that just too quick of a turnaround, I can I get that done in a two-day in that two-day window, so I I think this is more than a uh appropriate amended agen- uh agenda amendment, excuse me, for tonight. So with that.
No, I don't think so, I think, right, we do.
That should be in the motion.
Yeah, it'll be in the motion, so. Looking for someone to make a motion to either approve or deny the conditional use.
I would make a motion to approve the conditional use with the condition that uh the bill is sent out and paid and and also for um a an E N S plan to be, what's it called?
Yes.
Yeah, E N S plan to be.
Supplemented to the record.
Supplemented along with that prior to uh.
Permit issuance.
Yeah, so do we wanna set a timeframe on that, Tim, like what is?
So ten days?
Ten days, okay, so that that erosion plan in in your motion, the erosion plan needs to be submitted within ten days for this to continue forward?
Yes.
Uh Jeremy, you'll be abstaining from this vote?
Yes.
So there is a motion to approve the conditional use, um the the six hundred dollar invoice must be sent and paid within ten days as well as the supplemental erosion plan submitted to Tim, that's been a motion by Chris, is there a second? All second that motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And Jeremy abstains from the vote. So um motion is approved for the conditional use uh for logging for the property, Jeremy's mail.
Uh just to add to that, one thing that I spoke with uh in regard to the projected Tim earlier was providing him the parcel I P number that that specific logging activity will take and I and I told him that I would also provide that to him as well, so he can put it in his entire package, just so everybody's aware that I'll be doing that.
Yeah, I spoke with Jeremy earlier today, he didn't have an attorney in use in this circumstance, I would potentially, but since he's the applicant, I'm uh upper unrepresented in the actual factual finding, I wanna be specific about the parcel itself, that's very important here, so it doesn't have an actual address, but we'll include the uh tax parcel I D. to make sure there's no no confusion. Thank you, Jeremy.
Yeah, no problem, Jeremy.
Um, any other communications?
Well, Tina, before we get on, we one time on last year's agenda server uh reorganization, we had set hours, is there a reason we're not looking at that again?
It's an administrative function, I mean, unless the board feels the need to change office hours.
I I mean, I I do, uh you know, this is just it is is my opinion, I would like to see some office hour, just one one hour, one day a week where we off off are open into the evening so that our public can, you know, come in, not everybody works the same schedule, and I know we're often out there by two except for Mondays, which is four. I was just hoping that we could have discussion about possibly uh slotting one of those days, whatever would would be, first off, if the board agreed, secondly, then what would be the most convenient day for Sharon? Which we would need her input on as well, but I yeah, I would like to see something that that extended maybe till six thirty uh one night of the week so that our citizens could come in.
Sharon, in your twenty-eight years here, have you ever had an issue with people wanting to hear in the evening excluding zoning, since that's not your position anymore? Has anyone ever said, I need to get to the township secretary in the evenings? I mean.
No.
Has that ever been, I mean, in my seven years here, it's all many, it's all pretty much been zoning, which is no longer your responsibility.
Only with zoning.
I I.
Well, how does how do the other supervisors feel about that? Does anybody else think there's a need for some evening hour or partially like one night where people can come in after work to submit an application or pick up a form or something like that?
So I guess that's the question, what what would be?
What would be the need for that, cause I mean, all the applications and everything, it's all zoning and everything goes to John now.
It's not just being.
Yeah.
I mean, we have a Dropbox.
John, if anyone calls you, you're.
Yeah, I just made an appointment with him to come meet him here. I've done that already.
Yeah, I mean, we have the Dropbox too, where anyone can drop anything at any time.
I've met people there on weekends, so I have a key to buildings.
Yeah, well, that's asking for clarification of what what we would be looking for in the evening and and are we covered for that?
I mean, I don't know, um. Think it is nice to be able to, you know, if you're working to to get to him, but I don't know what the exact that need would be, um. If if the need was mainly which one's gonna know, I don't know.
Yeah, I think, so Jeremy, looking for I I guess clarification, it sounds like what?
If if, no, if if like I said, this is a clearly just that that nobody knows this is out, just asking the question, if everybody, if nobody else feels that there's
Yeah.
uh any reason to to have one uh evening pseudo evening, you know, one thirty to six thirty or one to six thirty uh time slot where where a public can, you know, come in and interface if they don't have the internet or if they aren't sure about something or if they have a question or if they just wanna, you know, whatever, that's fine, it was just just a thought from a guy, you know, representing this constituents, that's all.
Yeah, and I think I I think what is going around the table is that most of the need for that is now under the responsibility of John and John's making those evening, night and weekend appointments.
And I appreciate that, then on the last thing I'll ask you about that, is our door open to the public when Sharon is there now?
Yes, yes.
Yes.
Okay, there there were signs on the doors that said it was, and I just didn't see it, it was like all business was through a Dropbox or something, that's all, I didn't know, I didn't know.
To the to the window, that people can pull up to the window, it's notifying them, they can come to this window and she can serve them right in the car window.
It, yeah, the um.
The front door is unlocked the whole time I'm here.
Yeah, the no- the notice is that they don't have to get out of their car, but can come to the window to get that service, but the door is open.
Perfect, you answered all my questions, thank you.
I mean, uh if now's the time to bring it up, I I am looking to bring up in in um another meeting, it was discussed a long time ago, I think more like during COVID time, but with the police department moving out of here, I would like to make um adaptations to this building utilizing that back foyer and having more of like a counter window. Cause again, I I'm not the zoning officer anymore, I'm not the, you know, I would like to have there be more of a um I can't think of what we're looking for.
Barrier?
Huh?
Barrier?
Barrier, yes, thank you, um.
I might just remember what the foyer was gonna look like.
Yeah.
Yeah, because I mean.
We had talked about this round and round a few times.
Right. Yeah, cause the the previous discussion was rather than opening the entire building and having people come in, be in the entire building, there's really no need other than for the foyer to have a service window, if they wanna walk into the foyer, Sharon can take care of them right in the window. That was our previous discussions, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one.
Yeah. And we can use the back foyer.
Is that what we have here or no?
What's that?
Is that sort of what we have here or no?
Well, look, most people use the drop-up window, um.
As a a Dropbox, but could it use that?
No, some people do drop up, I mean, we got a microphone there, so she can talk to them through the window.
I mean, they even come to the window and yeah. I mean, John and I just did that last week for a gentleman, but like um you know, the back foyer is larger than the front foyer and it would just be a matter of like changing that window that's near the vault as to I have like, you know, a counter and a window that would be like an open close and then people, cause that is also our handicap accessible entrance if someone chose to physically come in versus the drop-up window. That's just something I I've been looking for for a while, Chris and I were looking for it for a while, but especially now with them leaving the building and I'm here by myself, I would feel more comfortable that there was a barrier.
I don't know building at all, I mean, would that be a reasonable, easy thing to do there? I prefer more to you, Ted, than that, or.
Gary nodding yes.
I mean, I feel like that would be a pretty easy.
Public public confirmation of making it would do that.
I have a problem, uh like I told you Scott before, if I feel like I can do it, I'll hopefully do whatever you want me to do, just for the sake of it.
Yeah, I mean, I just, I I I don't know construction, so I guess it would be easy to put a window in it, that like a not that type of window with a public window in it, that.
Say. Yeah, with a counter.
Yeah. Gary not just said yes, it's definitely doable.
Gary's nodding yes, right.
I don't know construction, so.
Um, that would be something we would need to bring up and put.
We need to get a price on and possibly bid, depending on the cost, at least probably telephonic quotes.
A price of bits, yeah. So it's not on our agenda, is that something we would have put on add to the February agenda to vote on to then be able to get quotes for that, Sharon? We've been.
I would even say, I mean.
Do we need to have quotes or is it if that's something that?
It depends on the cost.
We don't know what the cost is gonna be, like.
They can do in the house.
Yeah, I mean, if we're doing the cost, we're just doing it in-house with just materials.
I mean, I've looked at.
Bro Krug, how do you think about our guys having to do it versus bidding the dog?
Not terribly expensive.
I think it would be under actually under a report of some receipt.
Yeah.
Under the thousand, yeah, cause we did put money, if everyone recalls, in the budget for improvements to this building this year.
But we're putting in new floor, then are we gonna need to rip out new floor that we just put in to?
I don't think if we're just working with a wall, I.
No, cause it the only thing whenever Sharon and Chris were discussing this before, because he wanted a barrier, you know, cause otherwise they were just meeting people at the door there and then they open the door and there's a person standing right there, was either do something where the doorway is or where the window is. Um, they they just filed these things up about that.
I would say that being our ADA access.
Yeah, the door and the window, when we looked, it was anywhere from nine hundred to seventeen hundred, it was under like two grand.
Yeah, that uh that's well under the uh that's even under our purchasing policy.
Yes.
Yeah, I wanna keep the those two doors as active doors so people can come in for our meetings, that that they would be locked and the window, yes, the window would be the new
Right. Right, and the window.
Service window, you wanna call it that?
Yeah.
It would just be a different kind of window, cause that that was, you know, a large window, it would be like a smaller window with a counter.
Well, could could you or you or whoever um, you know, just bring that to the meeting next, like the window, the cost of thing, rough, and then.
Yeah.
Go from there.
Yeah, I mean, I could, I did look at some things before, but it kinda wasn't really being talked about, so I just kinda.
We're talking about, friend.
I started discarded it, but no, yeah, I could look, I did look up some stuff before, um service windows and things like that. You can get it really simple, obviously more fancy or complex, like something like that would probably fifteen grand, but you know, we don't need anything like that, just yeah, something to slide papers in and out of.
So if you can put get some some numbers together, put something together, an idea of it, and then Sharon, will you add it to the agenda for next month so that we can take a look at
I'll look at some.
the potential cost and.
Yep, thank you.
Um Charlie, I'm gonna defer to you um in other communications because I I haven't had a chance to read through this.
Well, I I haven't either, I only, well, I haven't read this one, I got an identical one at Fort City though, so I am familiar with this letter.
Oh. Okay.
This is the A R D C, for those that aren't familiar, that's the Allegheny River Development Corporation, they fight for funding for the locks that allow recreational voting on the Allegheny River, um they fight every year with the federal government to try to get more funding for those locks to allow them to have an open schedule, to allow recreational voting. Because when the government determines the schedules for those locks, they don't take recreation into account, only um commercial, and the only commercial traffic stops in Shenandoah, so um they're just, it looks like seeking a resolution from us supporting their cause, um Fort City passed a similar resolution in twenty twenty-four. It's not on the agenda though, so obviously we can enact the ordinance tonight, or shouldn't, I mean, again, it's kinda dataless, but.
Isn't it just a resolution?
Yeah, it's a it's a resolution, but it's not on the agenda, so if it's something the board would like to prepare, a little better formatted than just a fill-in-the-blank resolution. It could be on the agenda next month for enactment to support their cause, it's not pledging money, it's not pledging anything, it's just them looking for us to say we support their cause.
I think we should probably do that. They do good, they do good things, they, you know, there's business coming through and.
I would agree. I I know the president of the A R D C well, really good guy, really puts a lot of time and effort into this group, so.
So.
And now, can I make one other comment before, or not in regard to that, I I agree with you guys wholeheartedly on that, uh but one thing I think we we looked over here is in regard to the water authority of vacancies, do we, should we take action on any appointments?
No, we we talked about that, we decided no, no action.
No. Yeah, we decided no action at this time on appointments.
We talked about. Okay. Like it might be impaired into the vote that's coming up, but.
Well, Phil's officially rescinded his letter, so they have five, five members.
There's five members currently, Phil rescinded his, so his seat's open and the other seat is open, so there's five members to vote.
Okay. No, they're okay, I think they're okay to vote, I'm not worried about the four months.
Seven-numbered board, right?
But it, but there's only.
There's two, but. I believe.
He's the board majority of the board.
You still need four.
Of the board. But you were without, yes, and in fact, I know this because I want to.
So even though it's a seven-member board, but only five active members, we would still, they still need four votes to approve.
And I did do more research into the reorganization of the board too and limiting their number of members and the other requirements, that is actually something they have to first introduce to be a resolution.
Okay, so do we still think it's not advantageous to appoint somebody?
It it may be, it may be.
Thanks for bringing that back around, Jeremy.
No problem, if we can take action on that, I'd like to make a motion to do that, if if we can.
I mean, it's.
Yeah.
We have a discussion update and the appointment.
So could, so could we make that under the film a condom, you just for throwing appointment, could we make an appointment of another person in that section?
Can I ask a question first, are we doing something with the resolution for A R D C that's tabled for February's meeting?
We're, you I mean, it wasn't on the agenda, so this was just for us to read and I'd say next month, if someone, if someone is like it on the agenda.
Oh, yeah. So next month, we want it on the agenda to go, it's sorry, resolution.
Do you want it on the agenda? That's the note I've written, I don't wanna keep writing it in there, let me have order.
Yeah, okay, so what, in order, Jeremy, we're gonna move to put the actual resolution, a vote for this resolution for A R D C on the agenda for February so that we can actually take action to to vote to agree or disagree on that resolution and then back to the water authority conversation. We can revisit the film accountable appointment and appoint someone to the water authority.
So I guess under old business discussion, potential action, item number two, uh the film a condo appointment, seeing that we got a uh we rescinded his uh interest in being reappointed to the board. All right, one second, I'm in the middle of a meeting, can, is there any chance you guys? Sorry, guys. I'm back to him, so I don't know, you can do it, look at it, I'm sorry, uh so in regard to that, uh with with the understanding that he has rescinded his interest in the in the appointment, uh I would like to make a motion to appoint um Tina as a representative on the board.
To a how long term?
Yeah, where are you at your terms?
We have a five-year and a three-year available right now.
A a three-year, please.
I think a free, there's a two, might be two.
Whatever whatever the lower number of terms that are available are, guys, whatever that is.
I'll second that.
I'm gonna have to watch this video just a second, it's been minutes.
So there is a motion made to appoint me to Phil's open seat on the water authority board.
Okay, at the lowest.
At the lowest available.
Municipal Authority Board.
Oh municipal Authority Board for the lowest term possible, which.
It expires in twenty-six, so it's a technically two-year.
It's a two-year term.
So it's a two-year term.
Perfect.
And then Chris seconded the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so the motion carries that I will be appointed to the water authority board and.
Yeah, you're filling Bob Dubo vacancy, just to be specific.
Filling. Tom, not Phil's vacancy, Sharon.
Sorry, Sharon.
You let us go through that whole thing.
Phil's would be a five-year, so.
So I'm filling Tom, the remainder of Tom's. Um, then somebody, I I guess I need to notify them that we.
Yeah.
I'm your member, all.
You have been appointed to that board, so you'd show up on whatever day.
Aye. Respectfully, um Jeremy, I know you have um their solicitor's email address, if you could forward that to me so I can just notify their solicitor, um, thank you, just. Respectfully, um, Jeremy, I know you have, um, their solicitor's email address, if you could forward that to me, so I can just notify their solicitor, um, thank you, just.
Absolutely.
Respectfully, want to let them know, and also find out when the next meeting is, cause that'd be real helpful to know for sure when that meeting is, so I can attend.
Yeah, you'll wish your first meeting.
I know it's really disappointing, we know it's Tuesday, what time it was?
Uh, six thirty at the Municipal Authority.
Perfect, um, okay. Any other new business or revisiting old business that was new business? Are we, are we good to? Okay, we've gone through, uh, other communications, visitor comments? Any visitor comments? Come on, you don't wanna stay here any longer, Gary?
I got a whole laundry list, no.
Okay, all right, no visitor con comments, um, any calendar additions? No calendar additions, so that takes us to our next meeting, which is?
February eighteen.
Eighteen.
February eighteenth at seven P M. And looking for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, meeting is adjourned. Thanks, Jeremy.
Back to you, guys.
Oh, Kevin. That, yeah, two. Are these, what are these?
Who changed your paper?
I got sheet paper.
Sheet paper. No more than I already put aside.
I'm, I'm gonna make a deadline for March, so.
Okay. Not on me yet.